I'll give it. One minute, and actually, um, I had before Ed gets on and we call to order, I realized in talking to some people, a funny thing about Zoom being different than our in-person meetings. Because they were said, oh, the only thing is, I don't know who the school committee people are. Like when people are talking, I don't know who they are because I don't know necessarily. Sometimes their names don't show up on my screen. So I was going to very quickly tonight, before we start the meeting, just have the school committee, members announce, uh, just say hello and just say your name so that when your face pops up on people's screen, they know who you are and that you're one of the school committee members. That makes sense. You know, why don't we do that one way to see if Ed gets on? And if he doesn't get on, we'll start without him and we'll figure he'll get on. Ness Corenti, do you want to say a quick hello so people know? Oh, you're on mute, sorry. Sorry. Hi, Ness Corenti here. Thank you. Libby?
I'm Libby here in the pink.
Thank you. Uh, Liza?
Liza O'Reilly, School Committee.
Thank you. Liza's a smart one. Her, her name tag actually says Liza.
I just figured it out. I just changed it, just for this meeting. I'll change it back.
Good call, good call. Uh, Carrie Nee?
Hi, everyone. Carrie Nee, School Committee.
And Carlos?
Hello, hello, everyone. Carlos here.
And I don't know if Ed's on yet, but-
Ed is going to be calling in in a moment.
Okay. You know what? I'll start and then when we get that, when Ed jumps on, we'll, uh, we'll have him say hello. All right, so I am going to call to order the June 1st, 2020 meeting of the Hingham School Committee. This is a comment from the Chair. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternative means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the beginning of this meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform other participants of said recording. Is anyone on the line who is looking to record this meeting? All right, seeing none, I will move on to a couple of things. I actually have a couple of statements to make tonight. One of them is a statement to, or a message to the Hingham High School class of 2020. So I want to just start this with, on a high note here. So on behalf of the Hingham School Committee, I am so pleased to congratulate the Hingham School Class, the Hingham High School Class of 2020 on your completion of your compulsory public education. While current circumstances required us to postpone conferring your diplomas, we do not need to postpone our congratulations and recognition of all you have achieved over the past 12 years. Over the course of these years, there have been hundreds of people who have made it their life's work to guide you, to teach you, to transport you, to feed you, to care for you. You have been with them in classrooms and nurses' offices and libraries, guidance offices, cafeterias, school buses, on stage, in band rooms and chorus rooms, in locker rooms and gymnasiums, on fields and sometimes principals' offices. In every step of the way, they have been there for you, cheering you on, encouraging you and caring for you, getting you ready for the day you would say goodbye to Hingham Public Schools and start down the path of your adult life. No one knew that when you walked out of that building on March 12th, that it would be the last time you walked out of the building as students. And now your time at Hingham Public Schools is complete. Make no mistake, hundreds of people who cared for you and guided you and taught you and fed you and transported you will still be here rooting for you, caring for you and encouraging you. You are the class of 2020, the class that will always be remembered, not for the things that you missed, but for all the ways that you will be missed. Congratulations, Hingham High School Class of 2020. We will see you on August 1st. And the second thing I wanted to bring up was our wonderful, wonderful student representative to the School Committee, Emma Quilty. Is Emma out there? I don't see her.
Yes, I'm here.
Smiling face on the screen. So I just wanted to, on behalf of the Committee, recognize Emma Quilty. For the past two years, we have watched Emma flourish in her role as the student representative to the Hingham School Committee. At every meeting, Emma's enthusiastic support of Hingham Schools is evident, whether it is with the pride with which she shares the many academic, athletic and artistic accomplishments of her fellow classmates, or with the decorum and empathy she uses to report on issues that impact the emotional health of our students, such as the multiple school shootings that had occurred across the nation that have become far too frequent, or the tragic losses of fellow Hingham Public School students. Emma gave voice to the concerns of Hingham Public Schools and has represented them with empathy, purposefulness and energy. Emma's commitment to the Hingham Public Schools and her engagement with her students, the administration and the Committee is admirable. Frankly, her leadership, empathy, maturity and energy that she brought to the role of student representative are qualities that all of us could emulate and learn from. Emma, we will miss your leadership, your commitment and your beautiful smile. So good luck to you in the future. You will be missed.
Thank you.
All right, um, and then I'm going to hijack this meeting for just a moment too, because I have one more, one more thing to, um, to bring up, and this is a more somber topic. So I hope folks will bear with me as I use this platform for a moment. This is just my third year on the School Committee, but it is the second time that I've felt compelled to address intolerance aimed at LGBTQ plus students. June, a month that is ironically meant to be a time of pride for that community. In the most recent incident, for any of you not aware, a Hingham Public Schools student from the class of 2020 reported that he and a group of fellow Hingham High students were walking through World's End when a group of younger boys, potentially middle schoolers, began hurling homophobic slurs at his group. When they called them out on their behavior, the younger boys grew bolder and continued their hateful speech. I don't, I don't know if those younger boys were Hingham Public Schools students or even residents of Hingham, but the targets of their speech were, they were our students and they are our neighbors, and they were not safe for that moment in this town. That hate runs deeper than what is experienced by our LGBTQ plus community. As I was thinking about the words I was going to speak tonight, the murder of George Floyd and the demonstrations that have sprung up across the country protesting intolerance, hatred and equality seemed a bit further away. Yet a Hingham family, including, again, former Hingham Public Schools students, had displayed a sign in their yard supporting black lives, and they woke Sunday morning to find that message of support had been defaced, shattering their sense of security, their sense of belonging. And they too suddenly didn't feel so safe in the town that they lived in, our town. So as I thought about the remarks that I would make tonight, I was ashamed that I hadn't spoken out more about incidents of racism, incidents of antisemitism, of homophobia, of harassment, incidents against students with disabilities, sadly, any of the myriad incidents of intolerance that occur in our schools and in our community. But not calling attention to those incidents, I allowed them to continue. But no longer. Starting now, I will raise my voice against injustice. I will raise awareness. I will take every opportunity I have to combat inequity. I will do better for our students and our community. I hope you will join me. Starting now, I have two things to mention that on behalf of the Hingham Unity Council, I'm gonna candlelight vigil on Tuesday, June 2nd, tomorrow night, at St. John's Church at 172 Main Street, as we join other communities around the nation standing in support of black lives. These coverings for your nose and mouth and social distancing will be required. And then later tonight in the agenda, under a 48-hour item, we will begin discussion about a proposal to fly the Philadelphia Pride flag at Hingham Public Schools. This is a flag which represents the inclusion of people of color in the LGBTQ plus community during the month of June. We must show our community that we will do better to protect, to affirm and to accept our children. They need us to do that for them. We need to do it for them and for ourselves. And we need to do that starting now. Thank you. All right, with that, um, we will move on to item two of the agenda, which is approval of minutes. 2.1 is minutes from May 4th and item 2.2 are minutes for, from May 11th. Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the May 4th to 2020, Red Lake School Committee meeting.
Thank you. Carlos, uh, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Libby. Um, any discussion or changes, amendments that, uh, last, Ness?
Yeah, just an edit on the time the call to order on the May 4th is incorrect. I believe the 4:04 is the time for the following meeting. We started that meeting at 7 o'clock.
Okay. We can make that change. Carrie, can you make that edit? Is that, does that make sense to you, Carrie? Yep, okay, thank you. See what happens if you have too many Zoom meetings to forget what time they start. Um, any other items? All right, um, seeing none, all those in favor, uh, we'll go around to Ness.
Hi.
Libby?
Hi.
Liza? Dr. Ed, are you on? Yep, I see you on there.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dr. Ed, thank you. Carrie?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Carlos?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. All right, minutes of the School Committee meeting held on May 11th?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the School Committee meeting held on May 11th, 2020.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Libby. Um, any discussion or comments for those minutes? All right, seeing none, um, all those in favor? Ness?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Ed?
Hi.
Carrie?
Aye.
Carlos?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. All right, thank you. All right, those minutes are approved. Thank you for keeping us up to date on those. Uh, item three on our agenda, questions and comments. This is the period of the meeting where the Hingham School Committee will allow public comment from anyone on the call, um, at this meeting who has an item that is not on tonight's agenda. So if there is any new business or new information that anyone wishes to share with the Committee, now is the time to do that. During the items posted on the agenda, including the 48-hour item that I mentioned before, we can take, um, questions and comments from the public during that meeting, that portion of the meeting. So if you have anything for public comment period, uh, if you could use the raise hand button in the participants. I don't see any, so if I missed anybody for any reason, let me know and I can call on you and reopen that. All right, item number four is superintendent's report, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Austin.
Well, thank you and happy June, everyone. Beautiful evening and, uh, welcome to, uh, the, the start of summer. Maybe it's not the actual date, but it feels like the start of summer. Tonight, some, I, I, my report is fairly short. I'm going to ask for some help from, uh, some of our other administrators. The first one is the recognition of James Kirkaldi, um, who was retiring this year. And I'm going to call on Andy Hoy, who is our Director of Social Studies, to speak about, uh, Mr. Kirkaldi and, uh, and lead that part.
Thank you, Dr. Austin and School Committee for allowing me to speak, uh, in recognition of, uh, Jim Kirkaldi. I'm joined by many members of our Social Studies Department, and it's our pleasure to recognize Jim Kirkaldi for his 48, you heard that correctly, 48 years of service to the Hingham Public Schools. Jim, better known as Kirk to his friends and colleagues, began teaching at Hingham High School in 1972. He served as K-12 Director of Social Studies for 23 years before stepping down from that position in 2015. Since then, he has been teaching one class of AP European History and is now completing his full retirement as the Class of 2020 graduates. During his nearly half-century of service, Kirk has built a reputation not only as a master teacher, but also as a beloved teacher. As tributes have been pouring in from former students from the 1970s to the current year, it's amazing how consistent the comments are. HHS alums fondly recount that Kirk developed in them a lifelong appreciation for history. He helped them learn how to learn. He held them to high standards while supporting them along the way. They recall his warm smile, his friendly demeanor, and especially his quirky sense of humor, including his famous dead fruit collection. Perhaps it's best to let these former students speak for themselves. From the Class of 1976, "You made a big impact on me and many others as a young teacher who actually made history interesting." From the Class of 1983, "You were knowledgeable, engaging, caring, strict and kind at the same time. I still want to be like you when I grow up." From the Class of 1995, "I was always impressed that you treated each class full of students the same. You engaged, respected and challenged us. You made us laugh. You brought the scope of history to life. You taught us the value of critical thinking." From the Class of 2000, "Being in your class gave me a lot of confidence and made me feel smart and capable. I can walk into nearly any art museum and I know something about why the art was painted the way it was or what the historical significance of the subject matter is." From the Class of 2011, "I've had many remarkable history teachers in my academic career, but you stand out for your endless enthusiasm, patient encouragement and kooky humor." From the Class of 2020, "Your jokes, funny stories, love for history and immense appreciation for art were a bright spot in my school day. As a teacher, Kirk has positively impacted thousands of students, and as a department director and professional development provider, he has impacted countless more. Hingham Social Studies Department is so strong today because of the solid foundation that Kirk established long ago. Our curriculum was built around essential questions years before the understanding-by-design approach became en vogue. Hingham's middle and high school students have been crafting DBQ essays, research papers and National History Day presentations long before the Common Core demanded such skills. Perhaps one of Kirk's best achievements has been in building a cohesive collegial department. When he first became director, Kirk had been the youngest teacher in a department of veterans. Since then, he has hired nearly every member on our staff. It is a fitting tribute to Kirk that this year, the Massachusetts Council for the Social Studies recognized the HHS Social Studies Department for its inaugural Recognition of Excellence in Teaching Social Studies Award, just as they awarded him with the Outstanding Social Studies Supervisor Award in 2015. And as a master teacher of AP European History, traveling around the country and Canada to lead professional development workshops and AP institutes, Kirk's influence is truly international. As Kirk retires, I don't think it's hyperbole to say that HHS is losing an institution, but his legacy will long continue. One tangible way is in our newly created Junior Book Award, the James J. Kirkaldi Award for Excellence in History. But even more so, those of us who have had the privilege to have been hired by Kirk, mentored by him and worked alongside of him are all better teachers because of him. Future HHS students will therefore continue to benefit from Kirk's love of history and the joy in teaching in it. Please join me and the many members of our department here tonight in offering to Jim Kirkaldi a bittersweet and deeply felt, thank you."
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's an amazing accomplishment, um, and to reach so many students who so many years later are still, have such fond memories and reached out. It's really touching. Amazing work.
Uh, Mr. Kirkaldi is actually here, I believe. Um, I don't know if you want to, uh, say a remark at all, Mr. Kirkaldi, at this time? Kind of put you on the spot, I know.
You're muted, Kirk. Turn on your, uh, turn on your mic there, Kirk.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I welcome the opportunity to, um, mostly at this time to thank all the people of Hingham, the Town of Hingham, and the parents and the students I've had who are now parents for making my career what it is. Um, it was never work, you know? I've always felt I'm a very lucky man to have made a career out of a hobby. I, I, I love history and I love being in the classroom and, um, it's just, I've never had a bad year. Before I was director, I taught the wide range of students, all different abilities, and I enjoyed that as well, to get a scope of the wide spectrum of abilities that we have in our system. And as a department head, it was, I think, the best job in education. I had opportunities to go maybe other positions, but that would have taken me out of the classroom and I knew I would never be happy if I wasn't also teaching. So to be a Director of Social Studies was the ideal job. And, uh, even having K through 12 is very unusual. Most of my colleagues, they don't have that kind of a, uh, responsibility at K through 12. And Hingham was doing that even before I was hired. So it says a lot about Hingham's, um, educational system with that kind of foresight. But, um, yeah, it's, I've been a very lucky man to be here. And, um, I can't, I didn't even know where Hingham was when I first got the job, but, um, I'm glad I found it. And sometimes it goes to show you how much luck you have. I'm sure if I was, got a job in another department, another system, would I have been as happy? I don't know, but I don't have to worry about that because I was in Hingham. So that's all good. So thank you, and this is, uh, overwhelming for me. I really appreciate everything. Thank you, Andy and the staff. I told them you can never have too many retirement parties. So this is, uh, my second one, you might say, and I will keep in touch. Enjoy having lunch with them and seeing what's going on. And, uh, I'm still teaching college and part-time, um, courses. So I'm not done with teaching yet, so I don't know what I'll do when that happens. I just want to thank all the people of Hingham, and I could not have done it without your support and the great kids you have. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Well done.
Very well done. Thank you.
In common, I didn't know what Hingham was either.
That's what's important. We found it.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you for finding this little corner of the world.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, uh, stay on the vein of our outstanding teachers. Uh, and the next one, we're going to recognize, um, Joan Kilbin, who has recently been, uh, as she knows, I'm an incredible hockey fan. Uh, and she has recently, uh, been given an award that I'm, and I asked, uh, Principal Melissa Smith to, to, uh, speak about. Melissa, I know you're here.
Good evening, everyone. Um, if you haven't heard yet, we do have a local celebrity at PRS, Joan Kilbin, and she is on here. You can spot her in her red, you know, I'm sorry, in her orange and black Bruins gear. And I just wanted to say a few words about her, just to share with you about why she was chosen for this special award. She teaches fifth grade at PRS and she truly is an inspiration to not just the staff, but all of the students and an asset to our school. She is part of the Bruins Academy and the knowledge that she's gained through that academy not only enhances instruction within her classroom, but she also brings it out of her classroom throughout the grade level and throughout the school. And I know that she presents to teachers across New England, so she, um, is really taking that knowledge far. The STEM connections point out the real-world applications and the students are highly engaged in her classroom. The PRS community is very proud of Mrs. Kilbin for receiving the NHL Most Valuable Teacher Award, and it was very much well-deserved. In addition to the award, SAP partnered with NHL and made a donation of $30,000 worth of technology equipment, and that was their way of honoring all teachers and expanding the use of technology in the classroom. Congratulations, Joan.
That's amazing. Congratulations, Joan. Another round of applause for Mrs. Kilbin.
Joan, I know you're here and, uh, show yourself in that great Bruins jersey.
Well, thank you so much. I thank you so much for your kind words, Melissa. It's been a true honor to represent the Hingham Public Schools. I was nominated first in March by the company who sponsored the contest. And I, at first, it's a little daunting to put yourself out there and ask for votes. I said it was reminiscent of when I ran and lost Class Treasurer at Central Junior High School, so, um... But, uh, I will say during the month of March, we had 30 days of voting and then another series of voting in May. And I used to always kind of roll my eyes when the Academy Award nominator nominations would say, "Well, it's just an honor being nominated." And I would say, "Yeah, right, of course, you want to win." But I can now honestly understand what they were talking about. It has been a true honor just to be nominated. I have been, as Jim Kirkaldi said, very lucky to be a teacher in Hingham. I am a proud product of the Hingham Public School System. And to have the opportunity to teach for 24 years in Hingham at the elementary school I attended has been truly my honor, my pleasure. Over the past few months, I have reconnected with so many former students and families that that truly has been the prize. I'm hearing from my kids who are now in their 30s and have families and jobs and they're productive members of society. And they still will share memories that they have of our classroom from 20-plus years ago. And so just to have the honor to be able to say that you have an impact on someone's life is a, uh, honor that I've never taken lightly as a teacher. It is something special about our career, something that, um, I'm not sure people can truly understand until they've done it. And this opportunity to have the nomination process and the voting process is really just, that's been the gift. Just having that connection with, um, my Hingham students and my Hingham family. So it's been wonderful and I'd like to thank the Hingham community for their unbelievable outpouring of support. I know it was a pain voting every day and I, but I truly, truly appreciate it. And I look forward to representing Hingham.
Thank you, Joan, and, uh, for those who, um, didn't know the process, I had the pleasure of attending a pep rally, uh, for Joan with no other than, uh, no other than Charlie Coyle, who's a current Bruin forward. And, uh, I know that, uh, he had incredible respect for you, Joan, and for what you brought to the table. And, uh, I think you might have, uh, given him a lesson that maybe teaching is his next calling. So, uh, congratulations, Joan. It's well-deserved. And you represent, uh, the teachers in the, in the Town of Hingham incredibly well, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, Dr. Austin. Thank you.
Right, um, thank you. We're gonna move on, uh, as we continue to honor those tonight. I think it's a very fitting night to do that. Uh, and as, uh, if you would indulge me for just another couple of minutes, Chair Ayer, I would like to, uh, say a couple of words to Emma Quilty. Thank you for the time that you spend representing your, your, your students, your fellow students. Your voice is incredibly important. The voice of our students is important to hear, to listen to and to be part of this process. We truly appreciate how much time you've done that and you, you've been willing to come to the meetings and, uh, tell us about what's going on in the school. Uh, I wish you all luck as you continue on with your education. I have no doubt this will be good for your resume someday, um, and I hope you use that. So good luck with what you do and thank you for, for being a part of the School Committee and about, uh, a part of the Hingham community. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
And that's all I have tonight.
No, that's perfect. Thank you. Do, I appreciate that. And, um, for the recognition of, um, Kirk and for Joan, thank you both again so much for everything you do for our students and for our town and our schools. And Emma, don't forget 20 years from now to remember all these folks here. You know, it's really great work and it's so, um, and I know none of you do it for the big fat paychecks or the recognition, but it is awfully nice when you do get the recognition that you so richly deserve. So it's glad, glad to hear it happening. All right, um, we can move on to communications. Dr. Austin, do you, why don't we see if Emma has any last student communication for us and then we can move on to yours?
Sure.
You were, I don't know if you do or not, Emma, but I figured I'd- You were, I don't know if you do or not, Emma, but I figured I'd.
Uh, I just wanted to, on the senior classes' behalf, thank all the parents and class officers who put in a tremendous effort with the lawn signs, the caps on the softball backstop, the picture clause, collage at the front of the school, the parade that is being organized, and the optimism for our graduation and even prom later this summer. It really means a lot to see a community come together to make up for what we have lost. We know the class of 2021 will be a phenomenal role model next year and can't wait to see the big things our hometown and high school accomplishes. I want to thank all of the school committee members for an amazing and learningful experience throughout the past few years. I've learned so many new life lessons and information about our town and I can't wait to take them with me for the future. Lastly, I want to thank all my teachers, administration members, coaches, and anyone else who has made my experience at Hingham High School and all the public schools the best one possible. I'm truly going to miss everything about the Hingham community.
Thank you, Emma. We will look forward to seeing you back here. All right, um, Dr. Austin, would you, we'll go back to 5.1, um, and communications received by superintendent.
Sure, thank you. And if I, um, I, I did neglect on my, my last one, if I can just expand a little bit on my other report, was to also say something about the class of 2020. Uh, I know that this would have been the, the graduation weekend. I, uh, look forward to hopefully in August that we're able to do, um, the things that we would like to do and, um, celebrate you at that time, but also to all of our students. And thank the students and the families, um, for bearing with, uh, remote learning and for all of the changes in your lives. Uh, I sent in a communication to the staff this morning how I know that all of you missed the end of the year activities, the trips, the, they, you know, the, the, the activities, the cookouts, et cetera. But I would also say that the staff missed that too. I know this is a change. For the first time in more than 30 years, I'm ending the school year in a very, very different way. Uh, and I've always enjoyed, uh, donning my graduation gown and going through graduation. Uh, and I hopefully will do that in August. But I want to say thank you to all of our students, particularly those, uh, graduating seniors. I look forward to, and hopefully, a wonderful celebration in August. And so with that, also want to talk about the town meeting will be on June 20th, um, this year. Uh, I want to communicate, we had a communication for that. The rain date would be June 21st. Both are at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. They will be held on our football field. Um, and social distancing and precautions will be taken. Um, and, uh, so hopefully you're there to be able to participate in that process. So it's on June 20th and then 21st for a rain day. So is your question?
Yeah. Yep, sorry. So it will be on the, so it's at the Hingham High School multipurpose field, multipurpose. And are they, it's just on the agenda, it says town meeting June 20th, but it says rain date June 21st at 10:00 AM. Is that just a typo? Do they both start at 2:00 PM? If it's.
They're both, the actual posted agenda shows both at 2:00.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Oh yeah, I only had 2:00 PM on mine. And thank you for the correction on this multipurpose field.
I think I originally mistyped it.
Got it. All right. No problem. Thank you. Okay, and if I can sort of jump in with a communication, because I just want to make a clarification for folks listening in. I did receive several, um, emails from folks asking about either why were we able to have town meeting in June, but we weren't able to have graduation in June? Or could we move up graduation now that we could have town meeting in June? And it is, and, and the, the reason for it is twofold. First, Governor Baker has a restriction on graduations before July 19th. So the governor has said no graduation ceremonies before July 19th. And then the reason that we, and so the district chose the weekend of August 1st. Um, I think it was before that date was finalized from the governor. Um, and we were thinking it looked likely that August 1st was the most promising date that we could, um, move the graduation ceremony to. But the other reason is the reason that we can have a town meeting versus having a graduation is that the town meeting is a legislative body and legislative bodies are exempt from the social gathering restrictions, primarily because the legislative bodies have work that is essential to continuing the operations of the town. For example, we must approve the budget by June 30th in order to keep the town, um, but finances running so that we can continue on with the business of the town and operations on July 1st. So town meeting was allowed, town meetings are being allowed because they're an exemption to the social gathering rule. And they also, um, are not part of, obviously, the governor's restriction on graduations before July 19th. So just wanted to make that clarification for folks, because it did seem a little strange to me too when I first started.
Right. Thank you, Michelle. I appreciate that and, and that's very correct. Um, the, the last communication I want to say is, I, I'm, um, and then this is really in response to what you had opened the meeting with today and just some of the very disturbing events that have happened around our nation, uh, and in support of our students. As is the custom, um, that I've had with our, our organization, um, the administration, uh, the administrative team, the leadership team, um, often gets together and talks about communications. And for the last several months, I've been putting out communications, um, that have had the, um, the signature of, basically we say it's the HPS leadership team, uh, that, that sends this document out. So today we did send a, a document to the community, um, certainly discussing our, our, um, support of our students and the need for, um, supporting any of our students that don't feel safe. Uh, and so that communication went out. I have never received before any questions about my communications and particularly that have been signed as the leadership team until today. Uh, and the reason I mentioned it today is because several people actually emailed me and asked me, one, what the leadership team was, uh, and who comprised of that. So I'm going to answer that question first and I'm going to answer it publicly. The leadership team is the Administrative Central Office Team, that's the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, Director of Student Services and the Director of Business Finance. It's all of our principals, assistant principals, directors of programs, as well as our, uh, teacher leaders across the district. That's what makes the leadership team. Uh, and the second part of the question is, did everybody, so, so when I sign the leadership team, does that mean that everyone was in agreement? And so what is our custom, like all of our communications that we send as a leadership? We share these documents together, we get together, we have a Zoom meeting and we work through the document. We, we wordsmith it together, we think, we put our ideas on, and we do our best to, to accommodate each of our thoughts into that communication. It's always impossible to get everyone, all 43 members, in the same place at the same time. Uh, and so the question was, did everybody sign on to this? Uh, and the answer to that is, not everybody was there, but the vast majority of leaders were. They represent other members, uh, and they, everyone has the opportunity to sign on to those things. The reality for us is the, the leadership team is a unified team of people. We accept other thoughts and ideas, we write collaboratively, and we come out as a unified team in one thought in mind. One thing that should never be mistaken in the kind of communication that I sent today, we took that very seriously and we take supporting our students even more seriously. We thank you for the questions and I hope this clarified. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. And, um, I thank you to the leadership team for sending that communication out to folks. I know in times like this, um, it's, people look to their leadership and their leaders to give their support and to show their empathy and to take the positions, um, that are important, um, for people to know that they're not alone and to know that they're supported. And I think that in this time, I mean, just with everything that is going on, it's just, I mean, it's completely overwhelming, right? I mean, one of these things would be completely overwhelming, right? And having all of these things together are just for many people, um, you know, more than they can take on. So it's important that they know that the school community is out there for them, that our counselors are available, that our teachers, um, and administrators and staff are generously available to talk to people, to encourage them, to, you know, give them the support that they need during these stressful and extraordinary times. And I do hope that folks, um, on the call will, or who are listening in will take advantage of reaching out to, um, those folks in our school district who are available to help you and also to the staff and faculty to reach out as well. Everybody can use some help from time to time and someone to talk to and just to get some perspective from. So, um, again, thank you to the leadership team for sending that message out. I think it was important for the community to hear and, um, and for it to be addressed, so thank you.
That's all communications. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to item six, uh, 6.1, uh, is to appoint the district's representative to the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board of Directors for 2021. Paul, do you want to? Um, sorry, do you want to just give us a quick update on that?
Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, every year the, um, the, uh, as we are a member of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, um, we are allowed to have a board of directors and since many years, um, that I'm aware of, it's always been the superintendent. Uh, I have enjoyed being a member of that board, uh, and learning more about South Shore Education Collaborative. And I would love to be able to continue in participating in that, um, as a member.
All right. Thank you. Um, if you, uh, so we will need to appoint, um, and I apologize, is do we take a motion, I believe, to someone stood?
I'd be glad to.
Nominate, oh, sorry, go ahead, Carlos.
I'll move that, uh, we approve the appointment of Dr. Austin as the district representative to the South Shore Educational Collaborative Board of Directors for the year 2020, 2021.
Let's not get that. This is Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie. Um, any discussion on the motion to nominate, to rep, to, ah, to appoint Dr. Austin to the representative? All right, seeing none, uh, take a vote. Ness?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, I skipped Dr. Ed. Dr. Ed?
Aye.
Carrie's aye. Carlos?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you, everyone. All right, Dr. Austin, you will continue to serve as a district representative of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, item 6.2 is to discuss the terms of the appointment of administrators to serve on the Hingham Education Association Unit A Sick Leave Bank Committee and to appoint the administrators. Do you want to give us some background and just a little information on this, Dr. Austin?
Sure. Uh, every year we have to, it's part of the responsibility of the school committee to, uh, ensure that we have administrators that serve on the, uh, as to serve the HEA under the Unit A Sick Leave Bank Committee. And we've had, uh, for the past years, we've had three, that's, uh, John Ferris, Mary Eastwood and Katie Roberts. Uh, it is my understanding that they would like to continue in that role and I would certainly recommend they continue on, uh, serving, uh, in that position as oversight of the, uh, sick bank, uh, sick leave bank, uh, the HEA.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Austin? Nope. Sorry, did someone have a question? All right, sorry, sounded like so, um, all right, but I don't see a hand raised and I don't hear anyone, so, um, all right, um, well, I would like to thank John and Mary and Katie for agreeing to serve on this, um, committee. Once again, I know you all take on a lot in your day-to-day work and all the other committees and subcommittees and other work that you do for the district. So thank you for agreeing to serve on this, um, committee. Carlos, would you like to make a motion to appoint?
Can, can someone make that motion for me, please? Thank you.
I can make the motion. Uh, I would like to make a motion to, um, appoint John Ferris, Mary Eastwood and Katie Roberts to the HEA Unit A Sick Leave Bank Committee.
Thank you. Uh, second? Libby, thank you. Any discussion? All right, um, seeing none. All right, uh, I will take a vote, call vote. Um, Ness?
Aye.
Thank you. Libby?
Aye.
Thank you. Liza?
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Ed?
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Great. All right, thank you again, John and Mary and Katie. Very much appreciated. All right, item 6.3, um, I believe I am hoping that, um, Board of Select Person Chair Karen Johnson has joined us for this part of the agenda. I see Karen is on. Hello. Thank you for joining us, Karen. Uh, we appreciate you being here as we move on to item 6.3, which is to discuss a memorandum of agreement with HEA, Hingham Education Association, Unit A, for a successor contract for the 2020 through 2023 school years and to act as appropriate. With that, I'm going to turn it over to the Chair of our Salary and Negotiation Subcommittee, Liza O'Reilly. Liza can walk us through, um, the, a little bit of the, um, agreement and fill us in on what our next steps are.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, so just as, uh, background, the Salary Negotiation Subcommittee, that includes Michelle, Eric, Carlos De Silva and myself, have come to a tentative agreement with the Teachers Union, HEA Unit A, uh, for a successor agreement to cover the three-year term of August 2020 through August 2023. And the negotiations actually began back in mid-December 2019 and we had met several times as full negotiating teams, assisted by legal counsel and association staff respectively. And our last full meeting was at the end of February and we had additional dates booked through, um, April at that point. Uh, once the shutdown occurred in mid-March, uh, the HEA then proposed and the school committee agreed to continue the negotiations in a truncated manner so that we could continue the progress that we had begun, but to do so under the conditions that we've all been working in. These truncated negotiations included smaller negotiating teams of four people on each side. And Carlos De Silva and myself represented the school committee along with Dr. Austin and John Ferris. And the HEA had four teacher representatives as well. There were no legal counsel or association representation during these negotiations. And we mutually agreed upon a limited number of proposals from the original proposals that were already on the table as part of the process. And we conducted all of the meetings via Zoom in this manner we're all familiar with. Uh, we actually met five times through the month of April and we did come to a mutual agreement. Uh, proposals from both sides were mutually agreed upon. And the contract updates that we came to really focused on improvements on how we can all operate the district together. Uh, several of the updates reflected changes in Mass General Law or DESD regulations, uh, including parental leave, uh, including rights for non-birth parents and clarifying rights for birth parents. Reduction in force language to reflect updated areas of licensure, as well as educator evaluation and staff qualifications being a contributing element to the staffing selections rather than simply seniority. And then, uh, also, uh, the opportunity to update the Educator Evaluation Handbook and Guidelines per some updates in DESD Regulations. In addition, we agreed to the formation of a study committee during the next school year to begin implementing, uh, flex block scheduling changes at the secondary level. Um, this is something that had come up through the NIASC accreditation and also an interest in implementing RTI, a Response to Intervention Time, in the middle school level. And so there'll be a. And so there'll be a joint committee that will look at peer review, research, and onsite visits to other schools so that recommendations can be made at both levels of the secondary level. And this new scheduling will be implemented by the 2022, 2023 school year. And we also can to the agreement for the one-year change in the agreement to begin school next year before Labor Day on August 31st. And we also agreed that when a parent or the parent's representative requests the opportunity to observe a classroom of the parent's child, then the time will be mutually agreed upon between the principal and the teacher. And we came to an agreement of a compensation increase of 2% each year, and that covers salary as well as stipends. So, I believe that this agreement is fair, mutually agreed upon, competitive with our other benchmark communities, mutually beneficial to both parties, and allows our teachers and staff to work together to continuously improve the teaching and learning in the district. And I certainly recommend ratification of this agreement. And I'd like to invite Carlos, you're my partner on this, if you have anything to add.
Liza, I just want to take this opportunity to recognize your leadership and Dr. Austin for, you know, being our spokesperson. Like you said, this is most definitely a win-win for all parties. We have to recognize our teachers for the job that they do. They are amazing. So, you know, to June and her negotiating team, thank you so much. I am glad that we have reached this agreement. And now move forward, continue being, you know, keeping the best and the brightest teachers in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add that I think that the, I also would like to thank Liza and Carlos and June and Paul and John and the rest of the smaller truncated negotiating team for moving through this so quickly. I think that the risk of given COVID-19 and how this school year, you know, ended up and how we have, you know, we are not sure what the fall is going to look like. I think that it was incredibly important and that you all recognized that we, it was beneficial to our students to make sure that we had a contract in place as soon as possible. So, great appreciation to everyone who worked on this, to get this done and to get it done quickly and fairly and equitably for everyone. And again, it benefits our students above all. So, thank you very much for the work on this. Much appreciated. Does, Karen, did you want to add anything? Did you, oh, you got your hand raised, so. You do. I, Karen, you're on.
I, I just wanted to thank your negotiating team as well as the faculty negotiating team. As Liza indicated, this was a difficult logistical environment, and I do think that it's so beneficial for the system to be able to conclude contract negotiations in a fair and equitable way and be able to concentrate really on the education and curricular challenges that we all are going to have facing us to start again in August. You know, I would say one other thing, and that is, well, the 2% salary increase is consistent with, with how we negotiate contracts on the municipal side. So, I think that consistency is important across the town. You know, that coupled with the financial management plan that we've all, you know, endorsed for FFA1, I think allows us to be, you know, mindful in managing the costs of operating, you know, both the municipal side of government as well as the school side of government going forward. So, again, I, I think it's really a job well done, and I really echo, Michelle, your remarks about being able to conclude this piece of business, again, fairly and equitably to take care of our teachers and then to be able to focus on our students, which is, I think, what we all want. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. June, do you, would you like to add anything on behalf of the HEA?
Um, no, I'd just like to thank the administration for helping us come to a fair and equitable contract so quickly. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members of the committee with any questions or comments? And then I'll see if anyone else on the line would like to weigh in. Not seeing any. Anyone in, on the line in the meeting who would like to have a question or make a comment before we move on to making a motion? All right, hearing none and seeing no hands raised. Pam, you don't see any hands raised, do you? All right, I don't know.
Sorry, no, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, with that, I would take a motion. Carlos, do you, or Liza, who would like, Liza, why don't you have the other?
I'll make a motion. So, I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement with HEA Unit A for a successor contract for the 2020 to 2023 school years.
And I'll second.
Thank you, Carlos. Any discussion from the committee? All right, seeing none, we will take a vote. I will start, actually, I'll start with Karen Johnson from the Board of Selectmen.
Aye.
Thank you. Ness Corenti? Libby Luicki?
Aye.
Thank you. Liza O'Reilly?
Aye.
Dr. Ed Schreier?
Aye.
Carlos De Silva?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so that is.
I'm an aye too, Michelle.
I'm so sorry, Carrie. Thank you. It was in their new configuration on my screen here, sorry. Carrie is an aye, so now it is unanimous. Adoption of the successor contract for the 2020, 2023 school year. Excellent work, everyone. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you, all the teachers. We really appreciate it. And it was crammed in, but it was good to have that completed. Having done other negotiations, this was a true plus of getting it done quick, so thank you.
Yes.
And Liza, you may, you may want to add that just this one of six, so five more to go.
Yeah.
Yes, that is true. But this was a big one to get done and in a, in a very eventful year, that's for sure. All right, so item six point three is to, so we're going to move on to six point three, to discuss a memorandum of agreement with Hingham Education Association, Unit A, for a six, oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading my wrong one. That's six, I'm at six point four. To discuss a memorandum of understanding with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding the online learning and operating during the state of emergency through the end of the school year and to act as appropriate. I am, again, going to turn it over to our esteemed Salary and Negotiation Chair, Liza O'Reilly, just to give everyone an update on this agreement and then we can see if we're ready to ratify this contract or this agreement.
All right, thank you. So, this is a continuation of the remote learning plan that was originally implemented due to the governor declaring a state of emergency and ordering all public schools to close through the remainder of the year. So, we had to come up with a new way of operating. And again, this is a continuation, so the three guiding principles in the development of the plan was to focus on the safety and well-being of students, families, and staff, ensure equitable opportunities for learning and engagement, and to maintain connections between the faculty, students, and families. This version of the plan includes a blended model of learning, including asynchronous delivery of academic content coupled with synchronous opportunities for students. We all work together to ensure that students have access to live synchronous connections with the faculty and staff for approximately 60 minutes per day. And, and that the grading would be credit or no credit format. And then that the special education teachers and related service providers will continue to make individualized determinations of service. And then also, it was agreed that based on feedback from the service, the survey, the district would develop technology resources for parents and guardians. So, in addition, this agreement included an agreement about evaluation of teachers during this time period, and it also addresses compensation, providing full regular pay and benefits to our regular staff, and also included a schedule about paying stipends. And just to summarize the stipend payments, stipends for teaching, mentoring, professional development would be paid in full. Stipends for coaching and clubs that were 80% or more fulfilled throughout the year will be paid in full. Stipends for responsibilities that were ongoing throughout the year but would not be continued through the emergency closure would be prorated, and there was an agreed-upon schedule for the prorating. Stipends would not be paid for any responsibilities that had not yet begun before the closure. And stipends for spring coaching positions would be compensated at 50% of the regularly scheduled stipends. And I will note that extensive benchmarking and research was conducted to ensure that this stipend payments were fair and equitable compared with our other comparable districts. So, that is a broad summary of the memorandum of understanding.
Great. Thank you very much, Liza. Appreciate that. That was also a truncated and fast-tracked negotiation as well. So, I would like to, again, acknowledge the faculty members on that team, especially the, the one night where we had a very long, a long discussion and long conversation to get to an agreement. But it was important, again, as the teachers recognized, to get that done for the students and to get this plan in place. So, appreciate everyone's work and commitment on doing that. And also appreciate, Liza did an extensive amount of work on researching the benchmark towns and surrounding towns for the information on the stipends. As she mentioned, the, what we, we felt it was important to take care of folks and to, to pay people for work that had already been completed and work and things that had been in preparation and planned for. So, this appears to be, you know, a, in line or slightly more generous than even some other districts have done. So, we were glad to do that because it was worthwhile for our staff members and our coaches and other folks who do so much extra for the students and, and by extension, the town. So, again, thank you, Liza, for doing that research for us all. Any questions about this from the, any committee members?
Michelle, I just want to make a comment and, and thank you. Thank you for also, you know, your leadership on this because you did also put in a lot of hours, you know, to develop the document, working with the administration. So, I just want to say thank you to you as well.
Thank you. Any, June, do you have anything for this? Nope, again, all right, thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments about the memorandum of understanding for the remote learning through the rest of the school year? I don't hear any or see any hands raised. So, I would accept a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding with the Hingham Education Association, Unit A, regarding online learning, if someone would.
Okay, I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with HEA Unit A regarding online learning and operating during the state of emergency through the end of the school year.
Carlos, would you like to second?
True, second motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. I do not believe we need Karen Johnson's vote for this one. So, I will start with Ness Corenti. Thank you, Ness, is an aye. Libby?
Aye.
Thank you. Liza?
Aye.
Dr. Ed?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So, thank you. And that is another unanimous agreement. Thank you all. All right, we will move on to item six point five to receive and review Proposed Section J of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual. This policy Subcommittee has been incredibly busy this year. So, you guys are probably very grateful for Zoom meetings and not having to meet in public so much, or not in public, but I mean, meet in person because the in-person scheduling gets very difficult. So, thank you for so, all this work you're putting through. So, all right, Carrie, do you want to bring us through Section J?
Okay, so this is Section J, and it's regarding students. So, and this is a first read, and it's a large section that covers a lot of ground. As with the other sections, with the assistance of our MASC field director, we reviewed the mask sample policies alongside the HPS policies to ensure that we have everything we need for covering our legal requirements and things for best practices. And Dr. Austin and Pam King participated in the discussions as well. Unlike the previous sections, which mainly govern kind of behind-the-scenes operations, this one impacts students directly. So, it'll be important that these policies and our handbooks align going forward. Examples of policies in this section include equal educational opportunities, attendance areas, entrance age, homeless students, educational opportunities for military children, educational opportunities for children of foster care, student dress code, bullying prevention, student complaints and grievances, interscholastic athletics and communicable diseases, among others. So, it, it covers a lot of ground. A few that I wanted to draw the committee's attention to. First is JB, which is equal educational opportunities, which prohibits discrimination in the public schools and programming specifically. And specifically, I wanted to draw the committee's attention to the third paragraph that specifies that every student will be given equal opportunity in school admission, admissions to courses, course content, support services, and extracurricular activities. And what we talked about in our Subcommittee is that this is, it's a bold statement for us, and it kind of, it is in line with the equity initiative that we've been working on all year. I also wanted to draw attention to JIB, Student Involvement in Decision Making. This is a good time to talk about it with Emma's last meeting. But one thing we talked about is working towards making the student representative an ex officio, non-voting member of the school committee, except for executive sessions. And it would be our hope that the next representative would sit at the table and participate in the school committee meetings to ensure that students have, have an important voice on the committee. We looked at JIH, Searches and Interrogations. And when we were reviewing this policy, we realized that we may want to revisit the MOU at the police department just because it's silent on interrogations of students by the police. So, we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. And also, we need to add hazing to the list of mandated reportable acts in the MOU. JJE is student fundraising, and we wanted to draw the committee's attention to Paragraph Five. This is the language from the MASC policy that states, "For safety reasons and because the committee recognizes that community members receive requests for support from many worthy causes, activities such as canning, door-to-door sales are strongly discouraged." It's from the mask policy, and it's driven by student safety concerns. However, we realize that certain groups in and related to the Hingham schools engage in these practices. So, we'd like the committee's thoughts and the thoughts of the groups who regularly engage with door-to-door sales or canning. So, what we were thinking, so we can talk about that. We were thinking about, for the rest of the policy, whether we include that or not, it would be a good placeholder for now, but we. But we'd like the finance subcommittee to review it and also in some corresponding policies in section K and perhaps get some input from some of the stakeholder groups that regularly involve students in fundraising. Finally, JQ, which is student fees and charges. And similarly, we thought this would be a good thing to have in place and works with our current practices. But that would also be a good one to have reviewed by the finance subcommittee if they're willing. So where I just wanted to kind of send some housekeeping notes where there's an MASC explanation about the policy. We left it in there for the committee to see as you read through it. But obviously, those won't be part of the final policies. And again, if you have any questions about these, because it's a lot of material and we've done an extensive amount of revising and rewriting. So if you have any questions, if you could just shoot me an email so I can go and dig through the Google Docs and explain, give it, it's explained to anyone who has questions exactly what we were thinking and why we made any changes. That's that.
Great. That is amazing. There's a lot in section J to go through. But thank you. Thank you very much for that. And do you, do we need, we're not taking any action on this tonight, correct? We're just receiving.
The first read, so just take a look and if anyone has any thoughts, then we can talk.
Michelle, I just want to add, when we were talking about this, we we do recognize there is a lot here. And we really encourage, especially the staff, and Dr. Austin was going to share it with, you know, all the staff. We really want feedback from people, so we're not rushing this section through because we know there's a lot here. And if if we can get it right, it'll, it's just to make everything better. And if there are things that we really want to keep, like the canning and the, you know, we'll keep it. But we're just, we're, and we're still doing some research ourselves on a couple of these sections. And we did look at other districts, not just masks policies, when we were going through a bunch of these and ones that we were questioning too. So there's, there's a lot to do on it and we welcome the input.
Definitely. Again, our goal is to have a good tool for the for the whole district to use going forward. So absolutely, any feedback would welcome.
Okay. No, that's great. That's good, a good reminder for the staff and for school groups and organizations and sports teams. So we are, again, looking for the feedback. So if folks can either reach out to to Carrie, to you, would you like them to reach out via email or to Liza and Libby, who are also in the subcommittee? Or, you know, certainly come to meetings. Also, great. So however you are best, however you are able to reach out to us, that would be great. Because the more input we have, the better it is for everyone. Because the one thing with the policy is you really want to try to not have to go back and amend it very frequently if you don't have to. So that would be great. So thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee on this section right now or? Ray Estes, I see your hand is raised. Ray, there you are, but I cannot hear you. Yes, sorry, you're on mute.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Thanks for that. Just a question, actually, maybe two questions. One, seems like this section of the policy manual involves, as you said, less behind the scenes stuff and more things that directly impact students and maybe even beyond students, the operations, things that could involve parents and parent groups and things like that. When you're in the process of soliciting feedback for this, is it possible to post these suggested policy changes to the website so that the public can see what you're proposing and then maybe provide that feedback that you're looking for? So that's one one question. And the second question is, I think you mentioned at the outset, but you didn't go into detail about it. One of the things is the age for starting school. And I know that that's a particular issue that was looked at rather extensively in the last few years by the school committee and by the administration. And there was actually some some public involvement in discussion about that. So I'm curious if you're looking to change, make a change from what has been established in the past few years.
So to your first question, yeah, I think it would be great if we could post that on the website so people can see it. It's a public document now too, so that shouldn't be, I guess, Paul, could we get the, could we get that on the website?
Yeah, we can do that. That's fine.
Regarding the age for starting school, we actually updated this policy earlier this year, so we didn't make any changes to that one.
So it's still five?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ray. That's a great suggestion about the website. So I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments? If you want to raise your hand or just let me know. All right, I don't see any. So all right, thank you very much for your work on that policy subcommittee. Liza and Carrie and Libby, really appreciated. And Dr. Austin and Dr. Jamie and anybody else who is involved. I know it's a lot of work, but it's.
Pam.
Pam, sorry. Thank you, Pam. All right, well, with that, we will move on to item seven. Other items, as may not reasonably known, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. And as I had mentioned earlier in my opening comments, I was, and I had alerted the committee as well as the administration and put it out a little bit today on Facebook that we, one of the things that I wanted to bring up under forty-eight hours was the discussion about flying the Philadelphia Pride flag at our Hingham Public Schools. And the thought came to me for a couple of reasons. It is Pride Month, first and foremost. But when I had read the story on social media from the Hingham Public Schools student who had been targeted at World's End and then thinking back to other things that have happened at the schools or outside of the schools. And to be honest with you, a lot of these things happen outside of the schools. And so I was trying to think of a way that we could visibly show our support for our LGBTQ plus students, particularly this month and particularly when schools not, the buildings aren't open, right? So I know oftentimes that classrooms and other areas of the school show their support for the community, but we don't have that this year, right? Because the students aren't in the buildings. And Liza did some research on DSE website. I had done some research. And one of the things that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education makes very clear is that, and I'm just going to read this because it's right from their site, that creating safe schools for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer and questioning students and all students is an important part of providing the holistic supports and enrichments outlined in the Way Forward Report. And it is a core component, component of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education priority to support social, emotional learning, health and safety. And when I read that, it really just spoke to me. And I thought that this seems to be a great visible way to support our students, to support other members of the community. And I think also even more, maybe, not more importantly, but as importantly, to show those students who felt comfortable, whether they were Hingham students or not, but to show those other students who think it's okay or it's cool or it doesn't really bother anybody or everybody's doing it, that it's not true. And those, that that community is supported and they are protected and we have their backs. And I think flying that flag at the Hingham Public Schools would be a tremendous show of support and acceptance and welcoming to our students and faculty and staff who are LGBTQ plus. And frankly, to everyone to know that this is the kind of district we are. We are welcoming, we are accepting, just like the community that we live in. And of course, there are always going to be people who are not, but at least they know, they will see that we are, that we have a visible show of support for that, for the community. So that was my thought in bringing that up tonight. I don't know what other members of the committee think about the idea. And also, I think Dr. Austin and any other members of the building principals who would want to weigh in on it. I know there is some, we have to think about how best to do this. So, you know, is it a policy decision? Is it just to make it happen? And so I just wanted to open it up for discussion and see what people's thoughts and feelings are and how they might think we might want to move forward on this. Libby?
I just want to say that it feels like a no-brainer to me, yes, make it happen. That's the easy, yes, of course, we support that, them, so, LGBTQ.
I, I think, yeah, no, I'm with you. I was, it's sort of my visceral reaction as well. Sure, why not? Let's do it. So I'm with you. I I think the concern of the concern potentially, and and Dr. Austin had a conversation with Andy Wa. The the concern is when you, if you fly this flag for this, the LGBTQ plus community, are you going to open yourself up to other organizations whose message you don't support? Who are going to ask you to fly their banner or their flag? And what do you say to them? I say you say no to them. But then you get into your First Amendment, who decides who's the group that we support and who is not? And I think, but I think we can craft a policy that makes that very clear. Groups that support and encourage and are welcoming and accepting and support the social, emotional health and safety of our students? Yes. Those that do not, nope. But so that that is the only part of it that potentially gets a little bit tricky. So. Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was thinking about this too, and I looked a little bit at some of the policies that they around that. I have, I couldn't find anyone that was like on point with this. But I think we want to be careful about not creating a forum, right? Because then anyone with any kind of points of view can come in and demand that we fly their flag or put it as their banner. We don't want to do that. With this one, though, I think what the policies that I found that I liked and I sent you the language and I sent it to Paul is, as long as it's in line with the missions, the mission of the district, then you're not creating a forum. And as I was looking at our mission statement, and one of the bullet points is habits, you know, creating habits of physical and emotional well-being, including a spirit of self-worth, resiliency and adaptability. And another one is a respect for the diverse views and backgrounds of others. I think that fits, this fits very nicely with that. And I don't necessarily think we, I mean, I think we could just do, just fly it now. And then, Paul, I mean, I'm happy to take up this up with the policy subcommittee to create some, something around it going forward, since this is a novel situation.
Right. Liza? Thank you.
I, I, I agree with Carrie that this is a group that's protected in our educational equity statement as our policies. It's also my understanding that if we look at this in the case of, we had Inclusion Week in multiple years for special education students and other students. And so we put posters up all over the schools and we did planned activities. I also understand that from my child, that in the middle school, at least two years ago, there are LGBTQ stickers in practically every single classroom supporting this group and that there are multiple stickers in classrooms in the high school as well. And so we are, when we are in session in the buildings, addressing this issue of being inclusive, which is also part of the DESE recommendations of safe school policies. So in this moment in time, we are not in school. And so to show this support again, raising this flag this year is a way of supporting these students in a visible way that students can see that we support them. As they have already seen, if we are doing something within the schools when we are in the schools at the time. So I, you know, I, I am in support of this. I think it's a strong message to share for all, just to share the message we support people's civil rights. And this happens to be this month when this is happening. Considering that we support Inclusion Week and we support a lot of other weeks and we do have clubs for these students and we support them in other ways. Why not do this when we can't be in the building?
Thank you. Do any of the, any of the building principals have thoughts that they want to share or potential downside to doing this?
Michelle, Carlos has his hand up.
Sorry. Thank you, Carlos. Sorry, can't.
So it's a feeling that, you know, the high school council is actually has part of the school improvement plan for twenty, for the next year. They're looking into cultural proficiency for students and staff. At our last discussion, a month or two ago, some great ideas were presented, sort of like, you know, that coming up with diversity training. So it is in timing that this is coming around. So I'm very supportive. This will most definitely send out a loud and clear message that we embrace diversity, we embrace our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Anyone else want to speak or have reservations? And this will be a safe space as well, if anyone is concerned about it and worried. I mean, I would, you know, like to hear the concerns and see if there are any, if we can address them. Dr. Austin, do you want to weigh in?
I do, I do. Thank you. And thank you for for advocating for all of our students and diversity in our schools, which is very important. And I want to echo that throughout the years, and I know that Rick Swanson is on tonight too, that the schools do a number of activities to ensure that all students feel safe and that this is a place for them and they feel included in everything we do. And I think that message is very important. I am not an attorney and I'm going to be very clear about that. I'm not an attorney. And so the the position that I have have, I think, said to you to do to care, and I'll say to the, to the rest of the community, is that I want to make sure that we are on the best legal ground. The fact that I am concerned and I still am concerned that we could become challenged or could be asked to support other, other activities in the future. And my concern would be for any potential backlash of possible, that First Amendment right that Michelle Air had just mentioned. And again, I'm not an attorney. I think that I feel that my job is to ensure that all the policies of this district are carried out as superintendent. I would feel better if there was a policy, but that's mine. And ultimately, it's your decision and I'm going to support that. Any way that you feel it's important to do, I would certainly prefer if we had policy that clearly discussed how we would take on and fly anyone's flag for any student and how we show support of students. So I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you. I see Kara Roth has her hand raised. Kara, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you, Michelle. As a teacher at the high school, I think it's a wonderful plan and I appreciate the committee's willingness to consider flying it this month, particularly in these special circumstances. particularly in these special circumstances and considering even a longer term policy. And I would hope that the risks that even though carefully considered would all be balanced out by the message it sends to all our students. So thank you for talking about this.
Thank you, Kara.
Michelle.
Yes, sorry. Oh, go ahead. I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I was holding off. I am not an attorney either, but I just pulled up quickly earlier that the US, I just want to read this thing. It says, "The US Supreme Court said that students do not shed their constitutional rights to freedom of speech and expression at schoolhouse gate. Though public school students do possess First Amendment freedoms, the courts allow school officials to regulate certain types of student expressions." So that being said, I, when I ran for school committee, the first three things that I said was safety, social and emotional, and equity for our students. And I think that this is, this is showing our students that we support them. There is a lot that goes behind this. Some of the stories are heartbreaking and it affects the kids. And I don't believe it encompasses those, sorry, those three qualities that I hold near and dear if we are not showing the support, a strong support. So I am strongly in favor of raising the flag.
Yeah, thank you. You know, someone had, oh, sorry, Karen, go ahead. Karen Johnson, sorry. Oh, I think you're, I think you're muted.
I just made all my good points, so sorry. You know, look, it's a really important discussion to be having and we are having it individually and hopefully collectively at the Board of Selectmen level as well. It's a very important issue to me. But, but like the superintendent, part of my job has been over the last three years to, you know, assess risk as well. The, and I'm not a constitutional law attorney, but I guess I'd say one thing, there's a, there's a case actually where the city of Boston was sued. They were sued by a Christian group who wanted to fly a flag on the Boston City Flagpole. And the, and they, and they were denied under Establishment Clause purposes. The city of Boston said, you know, they felt like that was promoting religion. And the city of Boston does fly, they fly the pride flag, as you probably know, and they fly, you know, a host of other flags that are associated with certain, either visiting dignitaries or other causes that the city embraces. But they had a practice in place that they could point to and say, you know, over the years, we've flown 250 flags, I think it was actually 284 flags. And here's how we made those decisions. So we had a pattern of practice in flying the flags according to these principles. And those principles, you know, talked about the values of the city of Boston, constitutional rights, but also importantly, in this particular case, said that they would not promote a particular religion. And the, the existence of the policy was actually very important in upholding the city of Boston's decision not to fly the Christian, the Christian camp flag. And it's really, it's not under a freedom of speech notion, it's under the Equal Protection Clause, which is, I think, kind of what Michelle alluded to earlier, which is, hey, if I, you know, if you fly that flag, I want you to fly my flag. And how do you, how do you distinguish between, you know, kind of similarly situated or similarly passionate people about their particular cause? So I applaud you for taking this up. I think it's courageous. I think it's important to the students and to the town. I guess, just given that, that one particular case, which by the way, the, the Christian camp is appealing. I, I think it's helpful to have, where we, if you had a pattern of practice in place where you had done this before, then I think like the city of Boston, you could point to that. And what, and the city of Boston, in the wake of all this, then adopt their policy. And, and so I, to me, I think the importance of having the framework that demonstrates how you made the decision and how if somebody else approaches you, you would make the decision, would be helpful to the district in being able to, I think, distinguish between those flags that you don't want to fly and to Carrie's earlier point, you know, not becoming a forum. You, this, this to me is so, so directly related to the educational mission of the district, makes perfect sense to me. But I guess all I'm saying is the one, the one case I've read, which happens to be in Boston, really relies pretty heavily on the existence of a policy.
Thank you. So.
Michelle, I, I would just suggest, I mean, I like, I really think we should do it. But I would also like to offer that, as I said earlier, we could put this on our next policy agenda and work on that going forward. Because I, I agree, I'd be much more comfortable if there was a policy in place. This is the first time we've dealt with this though, and an issue like this. So we could certainly work on that.
Right. So it's interesting, as, as Karen's points were being made, I was thinking to myself, and you may not have been planning on making, having me go in that direction, Karen, but as you were talking, as I was thinking it through, I was thinking to myself, this is sounding more, even a little more reasonable to do because I think, so the principle, so if there's sort of two tests, right, principles? Yes, it is the mission of the Hingham Public Schools and it is the DESI principle that we provide a safe supportive environment to, in particular, LGBTQ students, as stated in the Way Forward Report from the Commissioner of Education. So it lines up very well with our principles and our mission. And then for practice, I think that we have in practice been displaying symbols of support for pride inside the schools while school is in session in the buildings. But now that school is in session, but not in the buildings, this is just simply taking what in practice we've already been doing and just moving it outside to an outside venue. So that's sort of where my mind started going. I see Christina O'Connor has her hand raised. Christina, if you want to speak, are you on?
Yep, I'm, I'm muted, I think now. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say both again, as a resident and a teacher, that I echo what Kara Roth said about being a teacher and knowing that this is the right thing for us to be doing. I have a rainbow flag on my classroom door inside the building, as Liza mentioned, as many of the teachers do. I believe that Rick Swanson tweeted one in his office today. And I wanted to just add my voice as a teacher and as a towns person to supporting this choice. And I want to thank those of you who are coming forward with the courage to say, let's do this. Several high schools around the state already fly this flag. And when I was in high school in the early 1990s, I was a member of the, one of the state's first gay street alliances. And we had this argument and debate then, and in my high school in Orange, Massachusetts, that diversity flag at the time, as it was called, that rainbow flag went up the pole in front of Ralph Simaha Regional School in the 90s. So I, I think it's high time for us to do this and I really thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Rick Swanson?
Sure, thanks, Michelle. And I would just like to concur with what Chrissy just said. I did tweet earlier, a photo of Safe Space poster that I do display in my office, like many, many of our teachers and other administrators do at the high school. And I would concur that the symbolism of this act aligns perfectly with the mission of our school and I think of our district. And, you know, like, like others have said, and, you know, I'm a former social studies teacher, but again, not a constitutional lawyer. As long as we felt as though we were on safe ground constitutionally and that it was not going to open us up to a threat, I certainly feel as though it's a powerful statement on behalf of the school. You know, I've chosen to fly that flag at my own home this month as well. If, if the district is comfortable with it, I would be proud to see it at the high school as well.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. Karen, did you have? Oh, sorry, I think you might be on mute still. Sorry.
I'm usually much better at this. I, I think all of the, all of the practices that you described are really important. And I think, I think what would go a long way is to, you know, tomorrow, write all that stuff down and have it that it's, so it's contemporaneous with your act. And, you know, again, it makes, makes perfect sense to me. And makes perfect sense to me particularly, you know, under these circumstances, that that symbol should be outside the building, since no one can be inside the building. But I, I would take the time to document what you've been doing in practices across the district and, and have that as a filed memo.
Yeah, and I'll make sure it's all in the minutes as well for this meeting, so we have that.
Thank you. Could I ask, so I, is, is anyone else from the public would like to weigh in? Sorry, I don't have much of a view of the participants here. So if you are interested, you could either use a raise your hand icon or, at this point, I'm pretty casual, you can just call out if you have something to add to the conversation.
Michelle, Chrissy Roberts, can you hear me?
I can. Thanks, Chrissy. Yep.
Okay, great. Mom, is this like town meeting? Do I have to say my name?
Oh, yes.
Chrissy Roberts, mom of a high schooler and a middle schooler. I'm 100% in support of this. I think there's no time like the present with what we're going through to make sure every single student feels safe and accepted, whether it's gay or straight or black or white or what have you. And I guess the only other thing, I don't want to belabor this, it sounds like, I mean, I haven't heard anybody that's not in support. It's more just, are we on good legal ground? If that's the case, can we start flying the flag since time is of the essence and then work on the policy ASAP? That's my two cents. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. I was thinking along the same lines there, that it does seem like there is consensus amongst the committee and administration that everyone is supportive of doing this. Number one, which was hurdle number one. Hurdle two is there sound legal footing to do it? And it sounds like we can, there is. And then I think that would follow up with, though maybe a formal policy for the future. So in this case, we are doing it because what we typically would be showing as support for students in the buildings, we now are bringing out of the building, since the students are not allowed inside the building. If we want to consider doing this on a regular basis externally, if we're, when we're allowed back in the schools, that would be a policy decision. So I think the only thing we have to think about, and this was brought to my attention, and I'm not a constitutional lawyer nor a true expert on agenda setting and voting, but it was pointed out that do we, should we vote on something? Should we take a, well, I guess, I guess the question is logistically, what, what's the next step here? Do we have to vote on this? And if we do as a committee, then do we, are we comfortable doing that under a 48-hour item? Or should we convene another meeting in 48 hours post a meeting to vote on this? Or are people comfortable voting for something in, under 48 hours? That was not on the agenda initially. So that was a big one to just drop on the committee, so I don't know who wants to answer it.
I, I would be willing to meet on, I guess, Thursday to address this formally and give us some time to find if there's other policies in other schools so that we can, you know, move this forward on an ongoing basis. But I think voting for just this year due to the closure of school can also take, that's our position, this is a one-time issue. So I would be in favor of making the staff more comfortable with the legal aspects in 48 hours, advise a little more time to get more comfortable with that. And to post it as a publicly posted point on an agenda.
Right, that, that was, that was the only thing, is that when we have a publicly posted meeting, you typically would not, which I hadn't thought of, you typically wouldn't take, and Karen, I might reach out to you on that too, to sort of, yep, that's, you typically wouldn't vote on something that was just brought up under 48 hours unless it was sort of an emergency funding or something that was needed to be.
Yeah, I, I would be so glad. You know, you're taking a and you're, you're, you will become a student. So you have, you know, do you have legal arguments? You absolutely do. You know, are they sound arguments? They absolutely are. Could you be challenged? You absolutely can. So why give somebody a procedural argument like this? To, to distract when, you know, as Liza said, and I realize that the delay is important here, time is of the essence, but my, again, my two cents on this from a procedural standpoint, you're in a much clearer position if you post it and vote it at a, you know, a publicly posted meeting where this items on the agenda.
Michelle?
Yes.
If I may add that, as you may post this for, so the public know that's taking place and we'll be voting on perhaps the policy subcommittee could also come up with a resolution. And the resolution sort of like would, you know, highlight the language. It would be more powerful too, because it would be a document, official document that we can post on the website.
That's not, I mean, that's not really what we do. But we, it might be a good idea to come up with some, just maybe the list of things that we already do in the school.
I would agree.
Putting the flags in the classrooms. And then discuss it as a full committee. And maybe post it, you know, these are the things we do, just maybe some kind of documented, you know, detailing what the decision is and why.
That's what I was thinking. And you know, I, I can draft something up to do. So I, I'm thinking that, is this, is everyone sort of in agreement that procedurally, because exactly to Karen's point, I was like, I think we're on firm footing, both from a school standpoint, from a legal standpoint. And I just, it would be a shame to have something so positive and so affirming to get shot down of a 48-hour procedural issue. And we could, and given the 48 hours, we could post first thing tomorrow morning and have a meeting within 48 hours and have the flags flying five minutes after we adjourn from that meeting is, so is the committee, does it, does that feel right to people or? Yeah. Libby?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it's not June 1st, but it was going to be June 2nd anyway. So, all right, so I'm just picking up my calendar here. So.
The earliest we could do that is probably the 4th, because it's going to take us a little bit of time tomorrow to get that posted?
Yes, so Thursday, 4th. Pam, I, I, and Julie, I guess I should defer a little bit to both of you since I'm going to rely on you to post, to physically do the posting for me.
We can get an agenda in the morning. We can get it posted for Thursday during, you know, anytime from noon on.
Okay. What, on a committee, what are folks' availability to meet on Thursday?
We do have a salary negotiations subcommittee meeting at 3:30.
All right.
That will probably go till 5:00.
How about, how about, are people available during the, Carlos, I know you're not necessarily available during the day.
Not to this short notice, no.
I work until, I work until 3:00. If it were before then, I, I would make it happen. I want to vote on this.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Libby, can you, sorry, can you repeat that? You got a little.
Sorry, okay, yeah, I work until 3 o'clock, but if the meeting were before that, I would make it happen. I would be at that meeting. I, I want to vote on this.
Okay.
Can we do it after our salary negotiations meeting? At like 5:30 or 6:00 or 5:00 or? Can we do it after our salary negotiations meeting at like five thirty or six or five or?
Um, I can. Does that work for Libby? That's good for you, Carrie?
Yep.
Ness is good, Liza's good. Carlos, are you good for five thirty on Friday? I mean, Thursday.
Here. I'll be here.
All right, five thirty Thursday. And Dr. Ed, how about you?
Yep, come in.
You're available Thursday. All right, so Thursday at five thirty PM. Um, I'm expecting it to be a relatively short meeting. Um, so Pam, I will circle back with you and I'll actually draft something tonight and send it to you for the agenda. And then I will also draft for the committee, um, sort of the principles and the practices that we've um had in the past, which is leading us to um make this decision at this point, and I'll send that around to everybody and put it in the packet.
Sounds good.
Is that good?
Great. And the policy subcommittee is going to be meeting again on June ninth, so we can get to work on this and do some research to get something in place.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Terrific. All right, I'm into my policy. Thank you very much, Policy. Um, all right, it is not June second to get the flag up, but within the first week, and then we can keep it up for the entire month of June. Um, and then assuming we get through this on Thursday. Okay, awesome. Thank you, everyone. Um, I appreciate that. Um, all right, I am going to go to subcommittee reports and any special reports. Um, I'll just go around by member, um, and you can give us an update on um the committees that you sit on. Uh, Ness, currenty.
Yes, um, so we had our first two um finance subcommittee meetings. We had one on May twenty-first and then another one on actually today, this morning. Um, the one on the twenty-first was a very lengthy two and a half hours, so I appreciate uh John's time and the committee's time. Um, we went through roles and responsibilities, um, came up with quick, short-term and long-term goals of the committee. Um, that we then got into operating budget for FY twenty and discussed some open items that John is working on. Um, and just discussed through, you know, how to close those out. The year end happens uh June thirty, so those are um, those are coming up quick. Um, we then um got a quick update about FY twenty-one. Um, and that's where we spent a lot of the time today. Um, we were talking about the fact that we don't know what's going to happen. Um, school is going to look different and there's multiple scenarios that might happen. So um, we're going to be looking to the Recovery Response Advisory Committee um to give us feedback on that so that we can figure out the budget going forward. And uh, I think that was it.
All right. That's great. Thank you. Um, and thank you again, Ness, for sharing that committee. It's going to be important in particular in um the next, this coming up fiscal year. Um, so thank you and John, thank you for taking on the time to sit with everyone. Um, all right, how about Libby? Do you have anything to report?
I do, yeah. So um, the South School Council had a meeting and just this past week and um Mary Eastwood um mentioned that they're going to have a fifth grade virtual ceremony to uh advance the fifth graders to fifth grade on June fifteenth. So we're looking forward to seeing that and celebrating all of the fifth graders moving on. Uh, so put June fifteenth on the calendar for a virtual ceremony. Um, the, we went over the school improvement plan, which has uh made a lot of progress actually considering the state that we're in and um there are actually um some number of things that have to be postponed, but um not many and it's typical, but considering the state that we're in, it's understandable. And uh another, one other thing that 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 um we've done with school improvement plan, but it had to be postponed was the twenty-year anniversary celebration and that was originally going to be celebrated in the spring, but um has been moved to fall, which is still twenty years time for South School. Uh, so that'll be fun then and something to look forward to. And um as um Mary Eastwood says, uh, we're all just waiting for guidelines from the governor and um planning for every contingency and it's all hands, hands-on-deck effort to get this ship back in the water. So South School is moving along nicely under Mary Eastwood's guidance. Thank you. Also, so that's South School. And then um the Community Outreach Committee, uh, there's a couple of things going on. Um, we are actually, um, the Community Outreach Subcommittee is responsible for uh checking any other schools in the town um and um making sure that they meet all of the requirements and um then bring recommendations to the full committee as to whether we should sanction this school or not. And there's a new school coming to hang on this, we sanction it. Um, called Fusion Academy and they have a a site, a building site finished. They they've been working on it. It's at ninety-nine Derby Street. And uh, so the subcommittee, Community Outreach Subcommittee is actually going there tomorrow for a site visit at um twelve o'clock. And we're going to look at the facility and see that it's all up to snuff and then we'll bring a recommendation to the full school committee soon thereafter. And um if the committee does vote on it positively, then uh they will, they will get started as soon as possible. And it's it's an um it's an alternative setting, uh, sixth through twelfth grade with a one-to-one ratio and uh students can do a lot of their um education remotely, but they do also have the facility to go to and meet with teachers and um have a comfortable space to be in if they want that and um move at their own pace. So um, we're looking forward to seeing it tomorrow. And um, then secondly, the Community um Outreach Subcommittee is happy to announce that there's a new uh logo for the Hingham Public Schools. And uh, that was um had a lot of eyes on it. There were um, there's uh Sterling, which is the committee that's working on our new website, which is moving along. Um, has put the new logo, um, they just have a slightly different helm, um, still has the H in it and and then Hingham Public Schools and it's all red and white and there's no black in it at all. And that's very handsome and um just sort of a new fresh look that will go along with the new website when that comes out.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Lisa?
Um, Libby, I have a question on this new logo. Um, so when we use that logo for a lot of different purposes across the district. Will Sterling be doing a plan for how we recommending how this logo should be integrated across the district? Or is this just for the website?
Well, so I I'll actually defer to Dr. Labalai, if you would be willing to um say some things, um, Dr. Jamie, about the the intensive purpose of this new logo.
Yes, hi. So we did receive a complete style guide from Sterling for use of the logo across all uh Hingham Public Schools documents. So the the redesign, the initial redesign was because the current design on the existing website, uh, they, the resolution is too low and the one that we use for our current letterhead also doesn't carry the right resolution for web-based design. And so with the updated look also came a a refresher of the logo. Uh, they used the information from the initial meetings with the Community Outreach Subcommittee, when we met with them at the project launch um to sort of redesign the logo, understanding all the different places where it's actually used. And so we did receive uh from Sterling uh about two weeks ago, a complete style guide as well as multiple options of to use the image both in print as well as in web and then horizontal, vertical, and then actually slanted alignment, depending on how uh we choose to use it.
So, um, I, this is my professional background of branding and so I have a key interest in this. And so will we be rolling this out for our PowerPoint presentations, for handbooks, for phone directories, for like everything so that everything is consistent going forward?
That's correct. As of July one, twenty twenty. Yes.
Okay. And can we get copied on whatever communication is distributed so that we understand what we're supposed to do too?
I'm sorry, which communicate, which would you like?
On the style guide, can can we be included in that as well, please?
Of course.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie. Um, so so the website, I mean, the Facebook page was a sneak preview of the of the new logo. Um, it's great, it's great work and um the um, the Sterling and Jamie have done a lot of work on this, so thank you very much.
And the only reason, Michelle, just to clarify that the
Oh, yeah.
that Facebook got an early preview is because we had a request to remove the um, remove the poster, the top page, what's it called? The, not the profile picture, but the
The cover picture.
Thank you, because it still had the red and white. And so when we made the move to the red gown, we had another picture that was We Are Hingham that we we didn't actually own the copyright on, and so we figured we would use the new logo for our background photo, um, given the concerns around the graduation vows.
Thank you. Um, all right, thank you, Libby. Um, and sorry, just to confirm, Fusion Academy, is that, is it visit tomorrow or Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday, twelve o'clock.
Okay, good. No, thank you. Um, all right, so I did ask Libby, uh, Liza, do you have any other reports from?
Uh, yes, uh, twentieth, the Foster School Council met and um we had a great update on the remote learning going on at Foster School and Mrs. McGrath, uh, first grade teacher was explaining to us um what she's doing with her class. So that was exciting to hear. Um, and then on the salary negotiations, um, we are going to begin negotiations next with Unit B of the ATA. And we're in the process of scheduling dates with them and we've also been working on um some updates on individual administrative contracts. Uh, and then on the Master Plan Committee, uh, the committees met for the past two weeks. Um, one meeting, we were starting to address vision and goals for the master plan and then realized we needed to get into more detail on different subject areas. And so then last week, we had a meeting and we were talking about historic preservation, which is a key component of character of the town that's come out of the uh community surveys and also natural resources in town. Um, and we're, the next couple of weeks, we're going to be focusing on these specific subject areas um at our meetings. So that's just so you, you know, we're, that group is active.
Still pushing ahead.
Yes. Great, thank you. Um, Dr. Ed, do you have anything to share?
Uh, not tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Carrie?
Uh, just the policy subcommittee is meeting on June ninth and June tenth. Um, and then the tenth will be with the MASC Field Director and we'll be going over Sections E, which is Support Services and F Facilities Development.
All right, great, thank you. Um, Carlos?
Um, just want to give Principal Swanson the heads up. That would be him to give us an update. Uh, but uh, the school council did meet on the nineteenth of May uh to go over, you know, the plans related to remote learning, grading policy, and here and advancing award ceremonies and graduation. Um, they uh also discussed the the school uh improvement goal number two. Uh, revealing the review the uh graduation requirements. Um, they actually analyzed data from alumni survey that was completed by a hundred seventy-seven um uh recent graduates. Uh, and the council recommends a fu- further review of the PE requirement and consideration of a change that would enable uh sophomore to count participation in the school sports just as juniors and seniors are now able to do. Uh, they also discussed the uh improvement uh goals for twenty twenty-one. Uh, and they uh making the recommendation that we continue to look into school security, uh solar energy and uh financial literacy. Uh, we'll be meeting again tomorrow uh to continue uh the discussion on cultural uh proficiency um and uh other subjects. And so with that, if uh, if you don't mind, Michelle, uh, that Principal Swanson give give us an update on the plans for the award ceremonies and graduations and so on and so forth, break please. I'm such a podium on this part on that.
No, that's okay. Carlos, happy to uh just provide an update on that. We are um working on plans for an alternative award ceremony to be delivered at the high school on June thirteenth, which is a Saturday. Uh, it's a week from this coming Saturday. It happens to be the same day that um the car parade is scheduled to happen in the morning and uh I want to give a a thank you to the group of parents who spearheaded that event and working closely with Hingham Police to organize a car parade that would start at Resurrection Church at nine o'clock and then continue down Main Street, uh, turning right on Free Street and ending up uh driving past the high school where we would expect a pretty large group of faculty socially distanced but wearing masks to cheer for our seniors and wave to them as they go by. And then later on that day, we're ho- we we haven't finalized the plans on this. We're actually meeting again tomorrow, but what we're anticipating is uh an in-person event to be held at the high school later in the day. Uh, probably around five PM for all of our seniors. We think it's unlikely under current restrictions that we would be able to have spectators, um, including parents unfortunately at that event, and then it would most likely be just for students. But we would hope to deliver a live stream for anybody who wants to watch it from home. But um, we're excited to be able to offer what we think will be an in-person opportunity for our entire senior class uh in under two weeks. So while we're of course all disappointed that we've missed out on an awful lot of things, it's exciting to think that there's a lot still to look forward to and those celebrations will continue for really another two months from where we stand right now. So there's a lot to look forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, was that it? Um, was that it for you, Carlos?
Uh, Michelle, I uh, I also want to give an update that I am in contact with our legislators, uh, as I am the uh liaison. Uh, because I am asking them what's going on with the budget, uh, what are we getting for money? Um, and also, you know, I know is Karen still around? Um, just one question that we should be looking into pulling together, um, you know, uh, an invoice to send to the uh county commissioners. They do have ninety million dollars and they'll be disbursing that money any moment. Um, I know that Marshfield applied for one point six million dollar. Uh, and that's, they'll cover actually expenditure, uh, you know, with the computers for the pictures and so on and so forth. So uh, we uh, we ought to uh look into what they're doing, uh, if they already got guidances from the commissioners. Uh, so we can try to get some money on, you know, from them. At the same time, I am in touch with the, you know, Senator O'Connor, um, Joe Meskino and Jamie Murphy, trying to find out uh what's going on with the budget and uh if there's going to be any cuts or 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 whatever. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and and Paul and John, I think you, I know, are already aware of um, and I think, John, you're already putting some of those invoices together and tracking all the COVID-related expenses. Yes.
Absolutely.
So that will be ready to go. Um, thank you. Uh, I have two things. Um, Special Ed Subcommittee met um someday. They all sort of blended to each other. Um, so we had um a um good conversation around the remote learning for the special education um students and also um the plans for next year that are starting to already get underway under the new um RR AC uh committee, which is um planning for the reopening of schools in the fall and what that will look like. Um, and then um I was in touch with CPAC and they are going to be presenting their annual report at our July meeting. Um, I believe the July fifteenth meeting, but um I'll get that on the agenda, but just so everyone knows that will be coming. But, um, I'll get that on the agenda, but just so everyone knows that will be coming up. And then I had one other thing, um, to bring up. And Liza, I think I was going to do it, um, about Dr. Austin's evaluation. Um, so we had talked last time about potentially, uh, postponing Dr. Austin's evaluation. And then the Executive Board met with Dr. Austin with the permission of the full committee to come up with, um, a date that we would consider doing Dr. Austin's evaluation. Um, and the only thought to push it off a little bit was like, it's a little awkward to do these things on a Zoom call, um, given the pandemic and the COVID-related issues that we've been having. Um, you know, we might wanna tweak, um, where the evaluation was. So we had settled on a day that we would do it in July. But then I was reminded that there are some reports that are due to the state by the middle of July that require, um, the, um, ratings for all district employees. Um, and in order to get that information all done in time without stressing people out, we really need to get the evaluation done by June thirtieth. So with that, um, I would like to see if the committee, um, if tomorrow, Pam and I spoke today and we were going to, in the morning, send out the evaluation forms to each of the committee members for you to, um, put together your independent evaluation of Dr. Austin, send them to me by June fifteenth. And then I went, can, um, consolidate them and write the summative, um, evaluation for Dr. Austin. And then we would have a meeting, um, and we don't have to pick the date today, but, um, in June, um, to just, a, a meeting really solely just to conduct Dr. Austin's evaluation. Um, so are folks good with that plan? Is giving you till June fifteenth to get me your evaluations back? Good, okay. Um, one thing that Pam and I talked about today, and I will ask maybe Liza or Ed, since you have done more of these than anyone. Do the individual, does each individual committee member need to fill out that other cumbersome eval form? Or could Pam and I give everyone, uh, like a Word document with Dr. Austin's goals, what the indicators were, and then a space to write your comments and your ratings? And then I could just take all those and put them into that one summative evaluation?
Here, roll over. I'll be right back.
Do you know what I mean versus, because you know, like, do you know what I'm, you know, the evaluation on the, the actual rubric and the whole, I think it's twelve, thirteen pages. Do people think that would be easier to do it, just sort of in a Word document with having the goals and the, um, indicators and then writing your comments versus filling out the form? For my purposes, I find it a little cumbersome to go through the form and then extract the information I need out to put into the summative evaluation. But I'm willing to do it however folks feel more comfortable.
I think it'd be a lot easier to do a Word document instead of that, um, that form. The only thing is we wanna make sure that the Word document has the standards, um, from the rubric, so people understand like what the ratings they're, um, they're giving are. And so, and what you should be thinking about. But no, I, I definitely prefer a Word document.
And now it's changed that we're only using certain indicators. We're not using all of the indicators. So it might actually be easier to have the Word document on that portion that is limited to what we're evaluating against.
Yep.
My suggest, suggestion is that when you send us the Word document, Michelle, that you also send it on the P D F, because on Word, it's sometimes the format may change. So that way we'll at least have the, uh, P D F, uh, copy to refer to.
Okay, all right. All right, that would work. And if anyone, you know, really wants to fill out the form, I guess you could just fill out the form and submit that in. So, all right, so we'll do, so Pam, you and I, and maybe Julie, if she wants to, um, can work on that maybe tomorrow?
Sounds good.
To get out to everybody. All right, awesome, thank you. Well, that is all that I had. We covered a lot of ground tonight, everyone.
Actually, Michelle, question, hold on a second. Um, so did we agree, are we gonna meet on June twentieth, I mean, twenty second?
Oh, I did.
This?
And sorry, um, June twentieth is, so sorry, to do, you broke up a little bit, to do the evaluation.
Yeah. Did you, or did, did we talk about having a public meeting?
Yep, I didn't, I didn't give the date. I just said we would do it. Um, yeah, so that's a good point, though. It is, we're already in June. Does June twenty, uh, we initially had June twenty second on the calendar because that was the original postponed date for town meeting. Are folks available on June twenty second, um, for a meeting that would solely be to, um, give Dr. Austin his evaluation? Yeah? Okay, all right.
Yes.
Seven o'clock, seven P M? Okay, awesome. Does that work for you, Dr. Austin? Are you available? I guess you, I guess you kinda need to be there.
I'll, I'll be there.
All right. All right, perfect, thank you. Um, okay, so I'll send out some information, everyone, and just with some, um, uh, some reminders too about how it works now we're in this post-COVID and all that. Um, or not post-COVID, we're still in it. Um, okay, anything else?
Michelle, were you gonna talk about the R R A C? Um, because you did attend a, a committee meeting for that. Did you wanna?
I am sorry, thank you. I attended a, the first committee meeting of the Steering Committee of the R R A C, um, which is the, um, committee that is putting together, um, the plans for going back to school in the fall. Um, there are going to be, I believe, three subcommittees. Yes, um, Special Education, um, Curriculum and Facilities and Finance.
And Communications.
And Communication, sorry, so four subcommittees. Um, there are a number of, um, there are, are a number of parents from across the district on it, providing insight. Um, the administrative, um, leadership team at Central Office is all taking on a, one of the subcommittees. Um, and there's a lot of work to do. Um, the guidance that has come out from the C D C was sobering, to say the least. Um, we don't know what the final will be. Um, it's, it's gonna be a, a lot of work over the summer. Um, but there's some really amazing and talented and committed people on the committees. Um, and I know everyone is willing to roll up their sleeves and, and get the work done. So, um, so stay tuned, we'll give you updates on that probably every, probably every, probably every meeting of the, um, of the Summer School Committee, because we only have a few meetings. Uh, did you have anything you wanna add on that, Dr. Austin?
No, I thank, I just thank all the people that are on that. That's an incredibly, uh, impressive group of individuals from across the town, um, with the police chief, the fire chief, with public health, um, and our administrators and teachers and parents. I thank them for the work. The work is gonna be extensive, uh, and demanding, uh, and not just for that committee, but for the subcommittees, uh, which will be going very soon. Our next R R A C meeting is going to happen a week from Wednesday, um, afternoon. Uh, we were gonna have one this week, but I chose to give it another week so the subcommittees can actually meet, um, with their groups, uh, and report back. Um, but the work is gonna become fast and furious. And I would agree that the, the C D C, um, information, uh, is daunting, uh, as far as, uh, the thoughts about coming back to school. We certainly do wanna do that, if at all possible. But we also need to make sure that we have all of the, uh, our ducks in a row, so to speak, to make sure they're ready to do that and help the, um, safe way for all of our students and staff. I do anticipate that we will receive some additional guidance from the Commissioner of Education within the next week or two, uh, and that'll help guide our work as well. So, uh, stay tuned. Thank you.
Uh, just one question, when are we gonna find out which subcommittee is we're assigned to?
We actually, I, we can get that out to you tomorrow. I don't have them in front of me. Um, but we can get that out tomorrow to you.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well, with that, I think that's the third time I've said that, but it's a big tease, teasing everybody tonight. All right, um, with that, I think that is the last of our business for tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Carlos. Do I have a second?
A second.
I'll go with Libby seconded. All right, all those in favor? Uh,
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you so much for being here and we will see you Thursday night. Um, Pam and I will get the, and the Zoom information.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks so much, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.